It's just gonna be an informative starting without you.
I said, "You should be." How are you doing, Ms.?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Andrew.
Excited to be here, being the way to teach this at school. Like, coming to City Hall and talking and...
What school district are you in?
Uh, Bexley.
Bexley. It's gonna be recorded, too.
Oh, well, well.
Well, now...
You can show the video.
Now, now, now all of the information she provided makes a lot more sense. I was like, "This is really, like, super thorough."
Thorough.
Like, okay, I'll do that. I can't find my charger again. All right, good evening, everyone. This is a call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council Appeal Hearing for August 4th, 2025. We'll begin with the administration of oath.
Excellent. I'll be happy to give that. If anyone plans to testify tonight, can you please stand and raise your right hand?
That's not me.
Yes.
Okay.
At least I think. All right. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony and documentary evidence to be presented to council is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth, subject to the pains and penalties of perjury, which you shall answer in the affirmative by saying, "I do"?
I do.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Council has kept documents, so I believe we have everything in order. And then we'll move into the appeal hearing items. This appeal hearing this evening is for 24 East Mound Street. And we'll begin with the presentation from city staff.
Amanda, can you, can you pull up the... That page? Thank you. So, the appeal hearing this evening is for 24 East Mound Street, Application CA 25020. The appeal from the property owner is in regards to the application that was denied unanimously by the Landmarks Commission for the white vinyl fence that's up on the screen. The applicant was present at the May 27th Landmarks Commission meeting for CA 25020. Up on the screen is the information that was provided for the application. The request was to replace a portion of a wood picket fence along the alley, reduce a section of fencing as it leads to the alley just to the north of the property, to create the new pinkish-white line for the new proposed fence. The fence itself was a material change, so it went from a wood picket to a white vinyl. The fence was noted by the Landmarks Commission to not be a picket design, as there's no open picket tops. It has a solid rail across the top. With the application, the property owner was requesting to replace the chain-link fence between her and her neighbor with a matching vinyl fence. During the review, the Landmarks Commission had asked the applicant if there was any consideration for a wood fence. The applicant was resistant to the wood fence as it created additional maintenance element on the property. The Landmarks Commission suggested, instead of doing a vinyl fence, had she looked at doing an aluminum fence, something that had similar maintenance-free aspects as the vinyl. The applicant discussed that the aluminum fence design changed the, the character of the fence she was looking to put up, and that she wanted to put up a picket fence. The applicant did discuss, the fence design on the screen did note, that it is also not a picket fence design. And, and the applicant clarified that she wanted the thicker vertical slats and to what a wood fence type could offer, and also the proposed vinyl fence. The applicant discussed in detail with the Landmarks Commission on alternative materials. Ultimately, the applicant noted that she was not going to change her request, and was requesting a vote, which the Landmarks Commission unanimously denied seven to zero. When looking at the Old Town Guidelines, this property is in the original historic district. It sits on the West Mound Street Historic District. It's on the National Register for the first half of West Mound Street, or, excuse me, East Mound Street. When looking at the Old Town Guidelines, it does note to avoid non-traditional fence materials throughout Old Town, not just the historic district, and notes non-traditional materials such as chain-link vinyl and concrete block. This property is also unique. You can see on the screen that it is a lot with three frontages. It has frontage on Mound Street, which is the top section of the screen. The alley on the right side of the screen makes us a corner lot, so it has frontage on two roads. And then it also coincidentally has frontage on the alley to the, to the rear. Whenever we run into a three-frontage scenario like this, the front yard and then the side yard closest to the front yard is also considered a front yard, and then the alley to the rear, which is, in this case, technically a, a side yard, but because of the three frontages, it's treated for setbacks like a rear yard. It's a little confusing, but for this instance, just keep in mind that the alley that runs north and south, and then Mound Street are the two kind of front yards for this property, which set limits to building placements, accessory structure placements, and fencing placements. So, this property has an existing four-foot fence that runs along the alley. Staff had communicated with the applicant a couple of years prior when she was going through a separate request for doing a building renovation. During that Landmarks meeting, it was discussed wanting to redo the wood picket fence that's along the alley at that time, potentially even doing some sort of privacy fence design. Staff had informed the applicant that if she was to remove that four-foot wood picket fence along the alley, code would require it to go up to three feet in height because it's a front yard setback. If she was to maintain the wood picket fence, keep the same style, same location, then it's grandfathered in. It's just considered maintenance for that design and style. So, that's some kind of background information that's not part of the Application CA 25020 that would be helpful for council to be aware of. I do have some email exchanges from the applicant during that timeframe talking about changing it to a privacy fence, if anybody would find that helpful. That email exchange does go through the variance process to increase heights, change style, et cetera. One thing to keep in mind with the application for the appeal this evening, though, is the four-foot vinyl fence, if it is deemed to be appropriate by City Council, it does not, it's not automatically permitted for its height. The height for a material change would have to step it down to three feet. So, Planning and Zoning Commission would have to review the increase in height for what current code requirements are. Again, there's the existing wood picket fence there that can be maintained, but any change to the, the style and height have to go hand in hand to meet current zoning regulations, and that's beyond the Landmarks Architectural Review for Materials. So, if there's any questions for me, we'd be glad to help answer. I have the Chairman of the Landmarks Commission, Peter Lynch, here this evening to also answer any questions that you guys have specifically for the Landmarks Commission.
This may be a little silly of a question, but... Mr. Moore? Before you...
I'm sorry.
...begin your question, the next item on the agenda is questions to staff by applicant. So, I would like to, just for agenda proceeding, we'd move to that first. So, Mr. Ron, if you had any questions based on the testimony that Mr. Moore has given, if Mr. Moore is known with his presentation, it would be appropriate for you to now ask Mr. Moore any questions or any, any information you would like to clarify based on, you know...
Okay.
If you have any additional questions for Mr. Moore, I guess.
Sure. I just had the one is, so...
Thank you.
My teacher voice and everything. So, just, just to, like, be clear that I'm understanding correctly, the, the height of the fence, that goes through planning and zoning. That's not through the landmarks?
That's correct.
So, if something, if it was approved here for the vinyl, I would still need to go through planning and zoning to get that, that height approved?
That would be correct. So...
Okay.
Just for, for clarity for council and the applicant, the Landmarks Commission only reviews design materials and site elements for properties. Anything that exceeds the code limitations, setbacks, building restrictions based off of lots, in this case setbacks for fences, they can make a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission to increase that height, but they are not the ultimate body that approves that code change. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission approves variances. Landmarks Commission approves building materials.
Okay.
If, so let me just, I think I restate, just for clarity. If the, sorry, if this appeal is approved for materials, the applicant would still need to file a variance for the height of the fence with landmarks?
Planning and zoning.
Planning, sorry. Sorry. I meant planning.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And that is, I'm sorry, if, if this is not a question for you, that's totally fine. That is because it is considered the, the front yard and the side on the alley?
That is correct. So, so our code treats alleys on the sides of homes as your front yard for setback purposes.
Okay.
Not for building orientation purposes, but for setback purposes.
Okay. Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Now, would be an appropriate time for questions to staff by council. So, Mr. Moore, if you would like.
So, upkeeping the fence, the current fence, she's grandfathered in. She rips the fence up and replaces it with a new wood fence. Does she have to now go back down to three feet?
So, if, if the entire fence is completely removed, then the new fence would have to meet current standards. We've allowed for maintenance activities to take place as long as it is not causing public harm. You know, if there's something that's causing accidents or things of that nature, then, you know, we try to remove those non-conformities because of those issues.
So...
In this case, the fence just doesn't meet current code requirements for setbacks, so replacing it completely, you are now allowed to continue that non-conformity because you're taking away the, this, the product that made it non-conforming.
So, okay. And so, just completely means 100%?
So, in other instances, what we've recommended to people that have either fences in funky locations or, you know, aspects that don't meet 100% for the current code standards is to leave the posts in the ground and replace the slats, all of the decorative elements. You know, if there are posts that are completely rotten, obviously get those replaced, but do it as a replacement project. Don't do it with the intent for it to be a complete tear-down and it be a complete replacement.
That's where I was getting at, so I just wanted to... Thank you. One other question, too. I know we're in the middle of a... A zoning code rewrite. And obviously, I've been sitting on that. I don't, I don't think we've talked about changing any type of materials in those historic areas. Is that something that we're considering? Has that been brought up that I've missed?
So, we have not gone into the stage of the zoning code update yet to get into all the details for the Old Town District, to be specific. I will say that one of the goals of the zoning code update is to create Old Town design standards that create an additional layer of zoning requirements, where it's not just a guideline from the Old Town Commission. Whether or not those design standards include things like fencing materials, height, style, I think is a good idea. But it's not any, to any level we've gotten to in the zoning code update. But really, what that process does is it solidifies some of these ambiguities in the Old Town District. On certain properties have certain conditions. Why can't I have that type of condition? The Old Town District now is basically based on putting blinders on when you're looking at the property. You don't look at any other property around it. You take a look at what's best for that particular piece of property based on the National Register of Historic Places Guidelines for rehabilitation and new construction. The zoning element would put some specific standards down that would, in some instances, supersede the, the Old Town Guidelines, but not conflict, to where, say, for an example, there was a requirement for only wood fences, then anybody that wanted to do anything other than a wood fence would have to get a variance for material. So, that is, that's an example of how that could be used. But there is no path created at this point yet.
Okay. I, I didn't think we'd gotten there, but I just wanted to confirm I hadn't missed it. Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? Okay, here none. We'll move to a presentation from the appellant.
All right. Yeah, just, like, prepared a little, little ditty here. Good evening. My name is Anna Stron. I was born and raised right here in Canal Winchester as part of a long line of generations, going all the way back to my great-grandpa. My mom and dad bought their first house together on East Mound Street in 1988, right next door to where I live. They poured their heart and soul into it for the next 30-plus years. I've spent the majority of my life here in Canal Winchester. It was here that I learned how to ride my bike. I hosted lemonade stands, made my first best friends. I attended the Labor Day Fair. I rented movies from the place on High Street, bought my Jonathan Taylor Thomas magazines from the pharmacy. I went to the pool every single day, even before they fixed the bottom, and it cut everybody's feet open. I don't know if anybody remembers that. Hit up the Dairy Queen after softball games and met Santa Claus in the Old Town Hall Building. In 2013, like my mother and father before me, I purchased my first home here in historic Canal. I spent years planning a renovation that was unfortunately put on hold as I went back to college to become a teacher. However, last summer, I was able to get the wheels rolling, and my father, brother, and I spent the summer doing a huge renovation to the addition part of my historic home. It has been so fulfilling to make this dream and this idea come true, especially as a single woman working in the notoriously overpaid field of teaching. This summer, I approached the Landmarks Committee with the hopes of being approved for a vinyl fence. Unfortunately, it was not approved. I stand here today with my information in hopes that you can see my viewpoint and understand why I feel as though a vinyl fence would be the most appropriate addition to my home. I want nothing more than for my historic home to look beautiful and timeless with all the time and energy I've put into it. And I hope with the information that I have to provide, you'll agree that approving this fence would be a positive exception to the rules that homeowners in the historic district must follow. So, I said that the, the main reason that the proposal was denied was that vinyl was not a material that was used on historic homes when my home was built, so it would be inappropriate moving forward. However, there are many things that exist on my home now in 2025, 150 years later, that did not exist when my home was built. Landmarks Committee suggested that I use hardy board, which is a cement particle material. I used that on my addition. Aluminum gutters, vinyl windows. My hope is that we kind of realize that there are things that are more appropriate and easier to use as materials as we go through time, instead of focusing on what was available over 100 years ago. My goal is to maintain that historic charm and character of my home while also using materials that require little maintenance and that will look good for years to come. Vinyl requires less upkeep. I did, I'm sure, I don't know if you guys read it. I can go through all the facts, but I did list some facts here about, from a fencing company, about all the positive reasons that vinyl is better than wood. And then, many homes in the historic district of Canal have wood fences that are worn down, faded, and splintering, including my own fence currently. I did go through, I'm a little extra, I went through on Google Maps in the historic district and just kind of did screenshots. They are attached of some of the wood fences in the historic district. Even a new one is up kind of catty quarter to my home in my alley, and it's already, it's the, it's only a couple of years old, and it's already starting to warp. So, my main reason is that a vinyl fence would look good for many years without that required upkeep and without that splintered kind of worn look that the wood tends to get, get here. Let me see here. I feel like I had one more thing. I did attach, if the concern was that it wasn't the picket, which, that was my bad. I did not have a great understanding of what was, I thought the picket fence was the separated slabs. It's apparently the pointed top. I did submit another vinyl fence that does have that picket fence look with those pointed tops, that I would be happy to do something like that. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Since the appellant is also the applicant, there will be no, we'll move through that part. The next item would be questions from council. So, open it to members of council for questions.
I have one. You grew up here.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you, you know, you, you grew up on that street.
Yeah.
And the historic charm is like one of the things that everybody talks about. And I understand where you're coming from, like, your frustration of not being able to do what you want with your property. That's, that's a tough spot to be in, but the historic area of town, especially that old national historic core part...
Mm-hmm.
...has been something that consistently, like, this city council's past have said, "We want to maintain the authenticity of that charm and stuff."
Yeah.
Knowing that intent, knowing that it's work to keep our Old Town area really charming and historic and kind of neat, I mean, so neat that you decided to buy a house there.
Yeah.
Do you, do you really think it's appropriate for us to start letting vinyl fences into that area?
I think that if I was walking down the street, I prob, I probably, and I think most people, probably wouldn't go, "Oh, is that vinyl?" And if, I think if it comes down to a wood fence, there's no rules for upkeep. My fence currently is completely falling apart because I've had to wait to get the fence put together after the renovation and all this stuff. There's no follow-through after you've finished it to make sure that it stays beautiful. So, if you do the wood fence and then you just let it get dilapidated because you can't upkeep, to me, it seems like, oh, the vinyl fence is gonna last longer. I go out, I spray it off. It's white. It, it's got that fresh look for years and years and years, instead of the wood getting warped, splintering...
Well, it's much easier to maintain.
All of that. But I think the look in general, the look is gonna last, it's gonna look nicer longer than a wood fence. I think that the general look in his, in the historic district is, "I'm walking down the street. That house is beautiful." I'm walking down the street. Oh, I get asked all the time, "Is your house an old-school house? It's so cute," stuff like that. I don't think people are looking like, "Ew, is that a vinyl fence?" I don't think anybody even gets really close enough that they would be worried about that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah.
In keeping with the same theme of the vinyl fence being easier to maintain...
Mm-hmm.
Did you entertain the aluminum-style fence that you could also get in a picket style, and the height that would not require any changes?
Yeah, I didn't love the, the narrow, I guess, being on the alley, I, I try to get as much privacy as I can. I, I know I wasn't allowed to do the privacy fence, so to me, the aluminum is just kind of even more of a gaze into, because it's the narrow slats, super narrow.
You can also get them in the wider ones that's almost identical to the vinyl.
Okay.
I, I just did a quick Google search, and...
Okay.
...it came up that you can...
I did not entertain that.
Okay.
No. Yeah, I guess my family had an aluminum fence in between my parents' house and my house, and I guess, I, I'm sure I could have gotten, I could get a nicer one than what they had, but theirs was, like, rusty and it kind of bent and, and stuff like that. So, I guess I just never really thought of entertaining that.
Question. Can I ask staff a question about that aluminum fence? Since that material's permitted, if, if that was used, could she still have a four-foot fence as long as she kept the posts up, or would that require going down to a three-foot fence? Problem solver.
So, the...
I feel like I'm standing there.
I am not very familiar with the fence design Mr. Buskirk was referring to, but I would venture to say that, I have the Chairman of the Landmarks Commission here this evening. He may be answering a little further, but I'm, I'm, would venture to say that a aluminum fence that looks like one of these vinyl fences in the staff, in the applicant's submittal would not be deemed appropriate, that the aluminum-style fence is meant to be a traditional wrought iron look. And then trying to do a hybrid blend to a fatter picket style in metal is probably going against the same principles as doing vinyl, in that you're taking a material and trying to make an element out of it that is not historically appropriate. Now, to answer your second part of your question about leaving the posts intact, it would be the design change that would also trigger the fence design needing to meet current heights. If it's general maintenance, then we've allowed maintenance activities to take place without total removal and, and meeting new code. If it's changing the design style, that is outside of general maintenance capabilities.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we go to further, I think, any other questions for the applicant or Mr. Ron?
Mr. Moore?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll now move to council deliberation, and this can either take place in this chamber or in private. I don't know if council has a preference. Here? It's fine, it's fine. Okay, all right.
So I guess I'll throw my two cents in. First of all, I agree with everything she says, I get it. I live in an HOA neighborhood, and I want a privacy fence, but I can't have one. I wanted a vinyl fence, but our deed restrictions give you a three-and-a-half-foot fence, which the selection of a three-and-a-half-foot vinyl fence is slim to none and poor quality and, but with all that being said, I knew the rules when I moved in, and I, I, you know, I had to put up a wood fence, and I painted it twice in two and a half years, and unfortunately, I know that kind of comes with the territory and it, it does stink, but if you do it, it'll, it'll look great and, you know, I, I have to stick with keeping the, keeping, or agree with what Landmarks decided.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I appreciate all the information that Strong put together, and while as a homeowner, I'm like, yeah, certainly, that makes sense. I also lived on East Waterloo for a number of years and had a wooden white picket fence that every summer, constant maintenance, you know, you're painting a section here, a section here, and you got the wire brushed, and you're always scrubbing, it's constant, something that you have to keep up with, and so it, but boy, it looks nice when it's finished. And so, yeah, I think, I appreciate all the information, and you're right, that there are elements that you've captured where there are wooden fences that are not being upkept and they do not potentially reflect well on the area. And there's probably an element of code enforcement that, that could probably be done there with actually, you know, challenging people to keep up with the, you know, with their property. And maybe that's also the case that's being made here, is that, you know, you know, we shouldn't just be maybe focused on the people who want to, I don't know if it's the words upgrade, but, you know, they want to see, you know, their property well-maintained, and, you know, when you're looking at your options, vinyl certainly does seem like a more cost-effective, and, and it seems like, yeah, we're pigeonholing you into one sort of material, and it sounds like it may be even, after our code review, it might be even more firm. But I think that's okay. And I think, and again, I don't know about the next phase of this, whether or not, how it's going to work when you want to move the fence or make the fence higher, or any of the variance processes that are going to be required next, but I guess that I appreciate all the information you provided. It's hard not to see your point of view, I actually see your point of view. I think I, I think I probably would be closer deciding with planning and zoning on this as well.
And to be a little redundant, I think the biggest takeaway here is, we probably do need to hold people more accountable for their properties. You know, I appreciate that you want to, you know, and I think, no matter what the outcome of this decision is, I think your fence is going to end up looking beautiful, whether it's wood or vinyl or, or iron. I think if I were you, the easiest thing would be to do would be to, may, fix it, I guess. That way, you can keep your height, a little more privacy, keep the wood, paint it, and then you're not having to jump through as many hoops and even go back and ask for variances of height and everything like that. But that's just my two cents.
Yeah, I, I'm a vinyl fan myself, but live in a 110-year-old house right around the corner from you, and I've been denied for my fence. So, I mean, I get it, but there's, you know, there's logical reasons why we do go through it all, and it was the same with my law, I actually had to meet certain expectations. And I did know moving into this intimate preservation historic district, that would be what it came with, so unfortunately, I'd just tend to side with planning and zoning or the Landmarks on this one.
I love this home.
I love you too.
And so I'll be watching for that for sale sign out front someday. It's a beautiful home, and thank you for taking the time and money and effort to start rehabbing the inside. Obviously, you love the preservation of the historical homes. I think this was built, you said, in the 1800s, and, you know, you've talked about your heritage here in Canal Winchester, so there's obviously, obviously a lot of things that you love about the old historic district. And so I just want to thank you for all the time, effort, and money that you've put into the inside. I concur with my peers on council, though. We have a Landmarks Commission to preserve that beautification of our Old Town District, and so I would side with them as well. So, but thank you for all the effort you've put forward here today.
Lori's right, it is a very cute house. Every time I walk by, I think that's a mystery in there, it just looks amazing.
Lori, she's not selling it to you because she's been here for a while.
Did you like my pitch? I mean, at least I'm trying.
I just put a lot of money.
Yeah, she just, she just rehabbed it, she's not going square.
If you have, if you have a work party, I'll be glad to come over and pitch in.
Right, I'll pay for you, it's okay.
Same.
I'm right down the alley.
I'm serious, like, I'll come over and give you a couple hours.
Anyone that is listening to this is thinking, I need to start a fence painting company, you know?
Yeah.
I'll reiterate, you know, similar comments to the staff. We do appreciate the upkeep of your home, it is very beautiful, and we do appreciate all our residents, you know, similar to you, that are taking very good care. I too was in a situation where I wanted to put up a fence, and mine's a much newer home, and, you know, I was wooden fence on this side, and, you know, I ended up going with the aluminum fence on mine, but I do appreciate your effort in coming, but I would also side with Landmark Commission.
I'm just going to make it quick. I, I'm going to echo everything that my peers said, without reiterating what they said. I, I feel the same way, but also, I also want to say that I really appreciate that you decided to come back and live in Canal Winchester and you're a lifelong Canal Winchester resident. I love seeing that and I appreciate that, and hopefully you understand our decision and what we're trying to do in preserving Canal Winchester.
Okay. Sounds like, don't really require much further deliberation. Mr. Shamp, it says council vote is next. Is there a, a specific article or item that we would be calling for a vote on?
Sure, so it's just moving to either uphold or deny the appeal and the decision of the Landmarks Commission. And so I would just say, it really depends on however you frame it. I would suggest saying that the motion be to deny the appeal of the property owner regarding the Landmark Commission decision, and then a yes vote would deny it, a no vote would overturn it.
Okay. Is there always some confusing?
Yeah.
He was pretty clear.
Yeah.
Repeat what he said.
So, again, you're looking for a motion to deny the appeal of the landowner, and then a yes vote would deny it, a no vote would.
Okay, so chair will make a motion to deny the application from the homeowner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Chair made a motion, second by Mr. Buskirk. Again, reminder, yes vote is to uphold planning and zoning, or Landmarks decision, a no vote is to overturn. So, Ms. Jackson, roll call.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do, we do, no, no.
I know you did.
Please don't.
And honestly, when you're ready to paint that fence, you send an email, city, like, city council.
This is on YouTube.
It's on YouTube. It's public record, it's public record. We'll be there, we'll help paint.
You know, to Mr. Moore's point, I mean, like, maybe there is things that we need to start looking at when it comes to upkeep, because.
Yeah.
Right.
How forcible is that if we're asking everybody to adhere to these rules?
But if you can get an oil-based primer and paint, it lasts a lot longer.
Absolutely.
Okay, got it. Thank you guys so much.
It's way harder to clean up. Don't we need a motion to adjourn?
Uh, sure.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn made by chair, second by Ms. Amos, roll call.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Thank you. Timeout, 6:07. I don't know if we want to immediately go right into work session.
Patrick doesn't.
Okay. We're going to take probably at least a two minutes. You got a lot of time, you got a lot of time.
We are complaint-based enforcement, FYI, that's never stopped.
No, I know.
Anybody that.
All right, guys, we're still live. We're not live.
It'll take a year, but it'll get better, so.
Ms. Jackson, thanks for.
You did a good job.
The reiteration worked.
Not the reiteration.
It's not fun going last.
Should've spoke up first.
You were first or last?
Is that why you're late? I'm sorry.
Oh, I can print another one. Or Matt can print another one. We've lost.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Good evening. This is the call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council Work Session for Monday, August 4th, 2025. Roll call, please. Mrs. Amick, present. Mrs. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Buskirk?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Present.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening, we have City Administrator Matt Peoples, Development Director Lucas Hare, Finance Director Amanda Jackson, and Law Director Jesse Champ. Amanda, thank you for filling in for the Clerk of Courts this evening. That takes us to the request for council action. The first item is Resolution 25-039. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to accept the application for the annexation to the City of Canal Winchester of certain territory in Violet Township containing 4.38 plus or minus acres and being located at the northwest corner of Lithopolis Winchester Road and Ashbrook Road. Thank you. Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mrs. Amick. This resolution would allow the city to accept the 4.38 acres that's currently part of Violet Township in Fairfield County. This was reviewed by the Fairfield County Commissioners at their May 13th, 2025 meeting, and they recommended approval of the annexation. State law requires us to wait at least 60 days for when we receive that. That time period has passed. This annexation would accept portions of Lithopolis Winchester Road, which the property owner owns to the center line of, so we'd be taking on maintenance responsibilities for that portion of the roadway as well, down to Ashbrook Road, which we already maintained with an agreement with Bloom Township there. The property owner is intending, there's two single-family homes that kind of straddle this property line. This is also the county line between Franklin County and Fairfield County. That's why the parcel boundary is there. But there are two single-family homes, one of which crosses this line, that they intend to transfer. They would like to sell those homes. They inherited this farm. So their intention is to sell those, but to create new lots, we need to complete the annexation so that it's all within Canal Winchester's jurisdiction, which would then allow them to sell that home or those two homes. This resolution also in accepting the annexation zones the property as R1. So typically, when we take an undeveloped property into the city, it's zoned EU, which is exceptional use, which is a holding category we have that doesn't allow you to change the land use until you come in and apply to do so. Our code allows us for developed properties to accept the annexations or to bring them in with the most similar zoning category. So the adjacent properties to the west here are already zoned R1. So this would zone this 4.38 acres R1 and allow those to continue to be used as single-family lots.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Council discussion?
Why are we doing this? Or why are you asking us to do this?
So they can sell them.
So you gotta, you can't split the parcels if they're two different.
And the parcels would remain in Canal Winchester. The Zoyer family has resided on this property for a long time.
Long time.
And so they, the original Zoyers that lived there now have now passed. The children who have inherited this would like to be able to sell those single-family homes that are on there. And so what we'd like to do to clean up these parcel lines and allow them to transfer those houses is to accept the annexation.
Sure. But I heard you say in there, we're gonna take over the road, then. So...
A portion of this roadway along, along the frontage there, yeah, the half of the road.
So I guess my question is, is, I mean, why would we take on more expense to help somebody sell a property that's really not our problem? Because you're not able to run water up there, right? Because you can't get pressure. Is that accurate?
Not necessarily.
Okay. As I was told, we're never gonna water up there.
The rest of this farm is already in Canal Winchester.
Again, why, why are we doing this to pick up a road maintenance burden to help somebody sell a property? Are we getting any consideration?
One council member's opinion, yes.
Are we getting any consideration for it?
What do you mean consideration?
Money.
We're gaining access to additional property that's in the city.
Okay, that's a new twist. I don't understand it, though.
So there would be, there would be property tax on that additional 4.38 acres, correct?
Yes.
And if they tap into the city water, you're saying that they could, that helps with the new...
We don't have water out this far on Lithopolis Winchester Road this time.
That's right. You're probably not the right one to ask this, but any idea of, I guess, how big is the stretch of road we're taking over just?
How big is?
That stretch of road that we're, I'm, guess, estimate. You don't have to be exact. Half mile, four mile?
No.
Eighth of a mile?
A thousand, thirteen hundred feet.
Thirteen hundred feet. And...
Of what, half, half of the road?
Yeah, half, just one side of the road. I guess, what kind of expense is that?
I mean, I believe we already do winter maintenance on this section of roadway.
Okay.
So it's not any additional cost for winter maintenance, because we already run all the way out to Ashbrook Road.
You're plowing it, right?
We're plowing and salting this section of the roadway already. We, we do not pay for paving, so we'd be taking on future, you know, pothole patching and paving.
So we pave all around that?
We pave all around it?
Up to, up to...
We already have Ashbrook, we already have portions of Lithopolis Winchester Road.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to move Resolution 25-039 to full council?
Some moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Buskirk, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call, please. Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
No.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, Resolution 25-040. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to authorize the mayor slash city administrator to accept an easement from Isaac W. Kaiser.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples?
Thank you, Ms. Amick. This is a resolution or an easement that we just accepted, but it was a waterline-specific easement only, since at that time, Mr. Kaiser's come in, the adjacent property owner is building a house, there's a sidewalk going up to his place, his property corner, he would like to extend the sidewalk in front of his. This easement is making this a general utility easement for the sidewalk as well as the underlying waterline.
So, Mr. Peoples, let me help me for just a second. So there's a house, as, as I'm moving towards Growport Road, there's a house with a sidewalk, his, the Kaiser property, and then the other two homes, right?
Mr. Kaiser is the existing, was the existing, the only existing house on there. His was that, that first, it was a ranch, ranch house.
The white, the small white, okay, got it.
Before the, the ones have, have been under construction. So his next-door neighbor to the north is, again, was gonna put a sidewalk right up to his, he just wants to extend that.
Okay, understood. Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay. Hearing none, the chair will move to move Resolution 25-040 to full council.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Amick, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call, please. Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us to old and new business. The first item of business is OTH 25-012. I don't know if anyone specifically wants to speak to this this evening?
We're at third reading for this.
Yes.
Tonight, so I guess maybe just a plan on what's going on. This has to be recorded with the Board of Elections.
By Wednesday. Let's get them a certified copy of our ordinance or resolution with the language. I talked to Thad on the way over, and he said he's in discussion with Jeff Mackey at the board about the precise language of what will go on the ballot, but he's working that out. And we'll, we'll get that in place, but the most important thing is to get the actual certified agreement, sending our proposed changes over to the board by Wednesday.
Mr. Champ, this is a very silly question, but I've worked the Board of Elections before when there have been extremely lengthy, sometimes multiple-page things for people to read through. So those are the people that you want to hurry out of the booth, because they have, you know, read it before you come to the booth.
Yep.
But anyhow, will this be like that? Will the entire charter be there, or will it just be the proposed changes to the charter?
So I know Thad is still sorting that out with the board. He did say that they have talked and they will have, sort of prior to entering, I believe, they'll have the full text of the charter with the proposed amendments, so, to avoid that issue.
Okay.
So people can come and ask for it, they can read it before they hop into the voting booth on it.
Okay.
But yeah, we're in process. We'll have an update for you when Board of Elections figures out how they want it to flow. I don't believe it will be the entire charter scrolling through on screen.
Okay, great. Thank you. Council questions? Anything else? Okay.
Just one thing, Thad. We'll work on a communication plan to get that out there as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I was reading, I think it's, and we'll talk about it when we get to that specific ordinance, but it says that it has to be published in the newspaper or mailer. So do you want to hold that until we get, because I'd like to know more about how we're communicating. Okay, great. Thank you. The next item under the old and new business is OTH 25-013, Rumke Contract Renewal. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. We do have final numbers from, from Rumke on this. This is a, it's a 13% increase over five years. So they are incrementally doing a, an increase each year for five years, about 2.6% or something like that, that it comes out to. I do have those final numbers, working with them to finalize a few other services within the city, and then also looking at some yard waste as well. We have, we're working with Mr. Bennett on, in this, with the Sustainability Committee, at least that is a future topic, upcoming topic.
Sustainability Commission this week, but that would be discussed now.
Okay. So just to get, we do have a framework on that, so just want to check what the viability of that is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
So just a heads up, this does not need council authorization. The original contract that we entered into had provisions in there for negotiating in next term.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is OTH 25-014, the CW Historical Society Opie Chaney Mill Project. Many of you are aware that Elevate 1828, which is going to be the new Chaney Mill Event Center, is planning to open in November, I believe. And we've been in discussions with Bruna Brendage, she's the executive president, is that correct?
Executive director.
Executive Director, about the potential of the city providing some beautification effort around the grounds. So gardening, some flowers, some plants, and a sidewalk. And so on August 18th, we'll be coming to you, there will be an item on the agenda for a financial approval of that. We felt that it's sort of necessary, because the Opie Chaney Mill is a, it's a cultural part of our city. The mill is part of our overall branding design that we use here in Canal Winchester, and this is a beautification effort that everyone will be able to enjoy and participate in, regardless of whether you ever even go in the Elevate 1828 building, the grounds will definitely be a beautiful thing to look at and enjoy. So look for that piece of legislation coming out on August 18th. The next item is OTH 25-015, and woo, let's talk about that flooding. Mr. Peoples?
Thank you, Ms. Amick. Yeah, just a, just some highlights from that, or lowlights, depending on where you lived in town. We had 4.1 inches of rain in 90 minutes on the 26th. There was additional rain on the 27th as well. The, the 4.1 inches in 90 minutes was, was calculated out to be a 300 to 500-year storm, which is 1.02% chance that it'll happen in any given year. Basically, it was just too much rain at one time for drains to handle throughout town, too much for tents to handle in town at the Rib Fest. We do have some pictures and videos of some of this, that some of this is, this is what was sent in to us. Hannah was able to get some of this off of our social media pages as well. But this is in Ashbrook Village, Sailor Court. This is between two houses. This is the, the property there on the right is some repetitive loss type of thing. You can see the entire cul-de-sac with, without much drainage. The drainage, of course, this is a 12-inch storm that goes between the two houses, obviously is not able to handle that. We are, as part of our, we've been looking at the Ashbrook drainage for, for about a year now. It, this happened, similar to this, happened in April of this year on a 50-year storm that was very similar to this. I think there's another video that has, shows the same cul-de-sac. There it is, that's April with a car in it. And this was obviously less of a rainfall than what we had over the Rib Fest weekend, but it was on top of multiple days of rain, saturated grounds, that type of thing that went through. So this was what they calculated as a 50-year storm. And then I think one of the next videos is Sailor, also Sailor Court. This is, the cul-de-sac is to your right. So this drainage is coming to the left of this property as you're looking out. It was actually traveling down Sailor Street as well. So we had flooding on Sailor Street down north of Williamson Lane. And then the next is the backyard of this property. This is coming off of, it's coming off this Zoyer property, the farm field all the way in the back. It is supposed to, is obviously not supposed to do that. There's a swell in the backyard that is not able to handle this much water. Again, this is probably the fourth time for, especially for Sailor Court, to have this much water coming around their property. Obviously, this has been, this was the, the worst case that we've seen there. And then the rest of them are just some, some pictures that residents have put in. I believe this is High Street, a round mound. Next one is, I, I think it's, there's a lot on, this one is up at either Hawkins Jennings Kramer, I think that's Tryon Street there, at the stop sign. We had, there's quite, that's the next one. This is, looks like Mound Street in the backyard, that we've had some, some flooding on in the past as well. There's quite a few, that same, same picture, that looks like the, the previous picture was the day before, or the day after, when it was a little bit more sun out. That was at, that night.
This is just labeled Jennings?
Yeah, same thing.
Well, that whole drain line was backed up all the way to Kramer Jennings.
The rear of Mound Street again. That's the front of Mound Street. The, the red barn is in the backyard of that house there, that you're seeing in the, in the picture. I believe this is Sailor Street down at the curve where it heads over towards Hilliard.
I think that is, sorry, Mr. Peoples.
You think I tell you?
That's Kramer. That's Kramer. I walked right by that car.
I couldn't tell.
I had to park at, I had to park at Mr. Shea's house to walk home, because I...
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't sure, because Sailor Street down at the end has a curve, curve there as well.
Yep. That's right.
That's Mound, Mound Street again.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then, I believe that's Mound Street as well.
Yep.
So while we're on Mound Street, we have, we're working on the East Waterloo Street project to put in these storm sewer. Right at Tryon Street, there's a 21-inch that serves this, this area. Goes all the way from Tryon Street to, up through 33, up through Hawkins Jennings Kramer, through the Winchester Trace, and up to 33. This, we have a bottleneck in this line down here at, at Tryon Street. There's, it's 21-inch all the way down, except for the last 100 feet or so, which is an 18-inch. We are taking a 30-inch from Tryon Street until we get to the, the Long Alley and Emma's Meadow, right there. So that will alleviate, the, the entire system was full. We put a, in the blue house across the street here, the, between there and Mobo Med Spa, the, the manhole there was, I mean, right at the top. This is, it's a new manhole that we put in. That's, we're working on that line from the backup we had in Mr. Cox's house across the street. So working on that, again, with Ashbrook Village, some of the flooding out there, Williamson Lane was flooded. We saw pictures of that as well, where the pond overflowed and was running down Williamson Lane to Ashbrook Road. We've had, we had flooding at, on Growport Road, west of Gender, and this was before it gets into the, right outside of town and in front of the Steepleton property. It was coming out of a driveway there we haven't seen before. The Die Edition had some, some flooding. Tom McCord had flooding. And then Lithopolis Winchester Road was over, overtopped as well. Did have a handful, handful of water in basements, Columbus, Hawkins Jennings, and Park Street, that the crews responded to. Rib Fest cleanup was delayed, and they were without, when they were out on the streets, they did end up coming back in on the 27th as well to additional rains. We had damage on the Town Hall roof that was leaking in a couple places. And then one is in the office, the back office was, was leaking, the one, and then one going up the steps that we've seen before over the years. The contractor is in on that. Johnson's Ice Cream, we have it, had it scheduled to be replaced. It, it came down quite a bit in their back room, is that, is that correct, on that? Down at the Water Reclamation Facility, we had experienced high flows, our, everything that went through a flow meeting, we had four days basically of high flows coming to that. The, the highest day was over 5 million gallons, and that didn't include two separate pumps that we had going to keep the levels down in there. If the levels go up to a certain point, Westchester Section 1 out by the, the golf course, Old Creek, Meredith Mistover, that will flood first. So we were fortunate, we stayed out of those. The guys came in and got those taken care of. They actually had to come back in on the 27th as well. We had two separate rains, one at about 11 o'clock, one about 2 o'clock, that dumped another inch or so of rain. With, with those storms, had to come back in and restart pumps and that type. Same thing, the crews from the street department went in on that. So just, it was a very helpless feeling, sitting there watching all of this rain come down, towing paths flooded as we were sitting there watching it as well. So we do have some, some vehicles that were flooded out. We have, again, some repetitive loss at Sailor Court, and some, just a lot of water that came in a very, very short amount of time.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. That's quite a, I don't know that any of us in this room will ever see anything quite like that. Again, at least I hope not. Thank you for that report. And I, I just want to say thank you. I know that you were, you know, working in the beer tent with the tent, potentially getting ready to cave in. And thank you to Sergeant Strawn and your whole team of people that I'm sure kept people safe. And the mayor, I think, was involved. And Mr. Moore, I don't know if you were helping in the beer tent, trying to keep it from collapsing, but thank you.
He had a little part of that.
Yeah, it was, I was, I was sitting in my car on towing path, watching people exiting, and I was scared for their safety, because the lightning was just so intense and the water was up to their knees. So thank you to everybody and the public service... people that were involved in the cleanup of, of everything. So.
One of Sergeant Strawn's crew was up here in the, doing security. She went out into the middle of towing path and put a barricade out. She was over her knees in that water just to make sure people wouldn't drive through, because people kept on coming in and coming in. You couldn't see the sidewalk there. So, you know, I know, then, then they had an altercation in there that they, that were able to take care of very quickly. And just, everybody, everybody pitched in where they needed to. It was Pat Lynch, former council member, he was helping with the, with the water in the tent as well. So, appreciate that.
Yeah, a lot of effort.
Biggest thing we have to think about is, I mean, it really stinks that all this happened. And I mean, it's nothing we can control. But the most important thing is, nobody got hurt.
Yes, for sure.
Considering, you know, thinking about, we're talking on emergency management. The mayor and I are working with consultant, working with Frank County EMA, you know, and, you know, one of the things the mayor came in and said, you know, what happened in Texas? And, you know, with the floods that happened there. Fortunately, we've not, we've not done any, had any of those, you know, you can replace property, you can't replace lives type of thing. Speaking of EMA, Hannah shared a Facebook post from Fairfield County EMA that had a lot of great information on it. Their, their numbers were more than our numbers at our rain gauges. They said we got up to seven inches in Canal Winchester. So, you know, our rain gauge is just an analog thing you can buy at Home Depot or something, I think is still out there. So, it probably didn't capture the extent of the rain.
I also had the opportunity to witness incredible mutual aid. There was a, I think it was a lightning strike, is what it appeared to be, on Washington. And as I was going home, I saw Bloom Township, I saw Madison Township, I saw the sheriff's, I mean, it was just a mutual aid like I've never seen before. So, it was pretty cool to think that that many agencies came together to help. So, very much appreciated.
Mr. Peoples, I heard you saying earlier about Mound Street potentially expanding the stormwater drain. Are you mailing anything to those residents? Thank you. So that they're aware of it? Because I had several residents on Mound reach out. A few of them are going to reach out to you directly.
Okay.
They did have a lot, a lot of them are still getting water out of their basements this week, just because of the amount that they have. So are you able to maybe mail them some information so we can be proactive in our approach of letting them know it's coming?
I'll share that with Mr. Sims. I have, Mr. Sims and Mr. Starch are working with residents that are directly affected with the construction. And we can work with them to, to put some, some of that out there. I don't know the extent. You know, this, like I said, this line goes up and it was the same one. We removed this line underneath the house on Jennings 10 years ago. It was a Coase House up there, if you're familiar with where that is. That went underneath the house and it was a collapsed line. It was not good. And it would, it would come up. And by the time I got there, it was gone. So, and then again, we found it underneath Mr. Cox's house across the street. It is underneath the house, one up from Tryon Street, the red house here. So, you know, we've been working on that for, for quite some time.
So was the family with the red barn, that was, definitely said they were going to reach out to you. But if we need to pass?
I have not heard anything since, I know Mr. Shea, you talked with the neighbor right there?
Mr. Graw, yes, sir.
Graw, yeah, yeah. And I think that's, I think he took one of, some of those pictures. There's what it seemed like it was from.
That was his back deck, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, a lot of the residents.
Lower lying area. I know, Ms. Amick, you've talked with them as well in there.
Yes.
Not too long after the work.
Mounding. Well, that's what I was going to mention is, so they, a lot of the residents were concerned with the mounding in that field behind and the fact that it's still elevated. Even though it's been that way for a few years, is that part of the reason? Because I know there's a very old drainage system running through the middle of that field. So they're concerned that that is causing part of what they're still seeing in their backyards.
I, I don't know all the topography with that. We've not done any, any surveys of that area. But there's, some yards feel lower than others, which that's where water's going to collect. And then there's no, while the drain goes through there, there's no opening, there's no manhole or anything with the drain to go through, water go through the top of it to drain some of the lower areas out. So that's not on the street, that's in a backyard, of course.
Right, yeah.
One thing I gave Mr. Graw, because he had those ponds with some extra mosquito dunks I had laying around. And I didn't know if in the future, with what we've got going on with some less now stuff around here, maybe that's something the street department could do proactively. When we get a heavy rain, throw some dunks out in the standing water, some of the places around the city.
Through, we, we don't have that. We're not, we contract with Board of Health.
Did they just spray it down?
Do what?
Did they just spray?
They did, they sprayed twice here in the last two weeks.
And I think they're supposed to spray again this week.
Is it Wednesday, tomorrow, or Wednesday night?
Wednesday.
Well, I'm thinking like, you know, out there on Groport Road, along the walking path where that water doesn't drain, you can buy those dunks at Home Depot and just throw them in there. And they just.
Yeah, that's what Frank County Board of Health does for us. We have the, we have the mosquito program with them. And they'll go around to standing floodwater and put those in.
Okay. How quick do they do it?
They're scheduling, while they do it, I mean, we've done it twice.
Well, I mean, after it rains and you get a bunch of standing water, how long is it until they show up?
I don't think it works that way.
The, oh, the, Franklin County?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they, they'll make their routes. I don't know when they show up, but they do standing water. What's that?
So after the big rain, they didn't just automatically schedule it to come out?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. When, when they route for that.
Well, I guess I'm looking for, maybe I'm suggesting or hoping that you would hear me as the city manager and maybe talk to Mr. Starch about that and maybe make that part of our after storm plan to help with mosquito management, just have the guys throw some mosquito dunks that prevent larva from hatching in our standing water. So we're not relying on Franklin County.
Right. Well, those are typically done in, on, in public property, not private property though, too.
Okay.
So roadside ditches and storm sewers and that type of thing.
All right, thank you.
Anything else regarding the flooding, Mr. Peoples?
Nothing.
Any further questions from council?
Okay, moving on to the next item of Old and New Business, OTH 25-016, McGill Park Phase 2B Presentation.
Do you want to do the mouse?
Yeah, yeah, whatever. I mean.
Good.
You might have to stand somewhere over here. I don't know if I can work over there.
So we discussed, I think it was the last council meeting, about our Phase 2, 2B of McGill. So, this is what we are proceeding with. We just received 90% plans today and are going through the process. This has been many different variations of a design. I think the last public presentation we put out there had two baseball fields here. They were the smaller, what are called a little league field, so the 200 foot outfield. It was very tight in this area. We had the playground and shelter house in between the two. Just felt that it was very constricting. So we wanted to open this up a little bit more. We got some feedback as well that we don't have any large fields. So this is actually, the way it's shown on here is a 300 foot field, which would do up to 14. 350 or 375 is the biggest that you get. We are actually moving this down just a little bit to be able to accommodate that. The infield will accommodate 90 foot bases. The way it is laid out right now, excuse me, there will not be any outfield fences. There is still a, a large need for multi-purpose space. Some of the soccer kids are, the fields are full. So having these to be able to, again, be as multi-purpose as possible is the idea for that. Obviously, the parking we put in there was for the entire area of, with full buildout. And then, as you could see, we kind of, there is a stream corridor, what you call it, restoration that we're doing through there. Right now, there's a wetland in the middle of this that is a little bit of a high spot. It does hold, hold some water. We do get some mosquitoes in there as well. So we are rechanalizing this to make it for a better flow through the bottom. We're going through, putting a, a second connector down at, now near the McGill House with a, with another crossing there. We'll have a pedestrian crossing in the middle as we come across, which is connected to the, the playground that's in this area. And then, again, a shelter house with restroom facilities, and then playground right next to it. We've added, as well, we've added, where's this?
It's up top.
Oh, there you go. So we have added some, some features that we don't have. We have some proposed cornhole in there, as well as bocce ball courts, I don't know what you call that. On the, on the next page is our, the designs. Here's a little bit closer look up, look at the, the shelter house and playground area. We do have some, just some components that we have in, in there, climbing structure, keeping with the, the natural theme that we have in the McGill main playground there. Again, bugs and that type of thing along with it. And I think there's a, what's the ball pit? Gaga Ball?
Gaga Ball.
Gaga Ball. And I guess that's, that's a thing now with that. So, yeah. So we are finalizing the design on that. Again, we've just got 90% plans in and are looking for to get that going this, this year. We have right now, initial estimate was 3.5. We got $600,000 from the state for this project as well. So, and that has to be spent by July 1st of next year. So we are on a timeframe to get this going. We have to get nationwide permit for the stream restoration. And that's probably the biggest thing at this point, other, biggest hurdle other than the funding of it.
Mr. Peoples, with the flooding that we just had, and that, the new trail and some of these fields potentially, I mean, they're going to be running along Wilder Creek. Did we go out and look at that after this recent flooding to see if any of that's going to be an issue with like where they're placing the trail?
Yeah, the, this area will. So, but there's trails in, these all be paved trails. And this is actually floodway across, where'd it go, across this whole corner here. So we'll have a very large mound that'll follow through here. It'll drop off into this. This is in the trees itself, it is in there now. Metro Parks puts paved trails in the flood, plain floodway all the time, our existing trail that connects Ashbrook to, the cover bridge to McGill here. It's underwater, right past the Washington Street Bridge as well.
Right as you dip down.
Yeah.
It's life.
Mr. Peoples, in the spring, when we saw an early, or had an early discussion about Phase 2, I asked the question about regulation size baseball fields. And you said this is now bigger, right? Is it adult regulation size? I'm thinking kind of along the lines of tourism. Would someone want to come and rent this field?
300 foot is adult softball. And if we, if we move this down, which this is, this is from the 35% set of plans. So our 90% is with this adjusted down, or it's, I haven't seen it yet, but it's supposed to be with this adjusted down, to be able to get a 375 foot in there, which is the largest field there is.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you for taking the resident feedback on that, because I know that was an important thing to a lot of people.
Well, we want to draw people to our community. And if you can get some adult tournament games going here, this would be a great thing. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Shea?
I've got a lot. The climbing structure.
Mm-hmm.
I always love a cool climbing structure. If we tripled it in size, how much more would that be?
Triple?
Let's do it.
They're, they're expensive. And it takes up large area, you know, to have designated fall zones. With that, it has its own safety, safety area along with that.
Okay. Well, I'd love to see it bigger.
Are you thinking like for adult?
No, I'm thinking for kids.
Oh, okay.
We need more, kids to be more adventuresome. Nothing like climbing crazy jungle gym, flexible jungle gym.
And then right across the People Bridge, which is, it's real close to where this is going to be. There is, there is a climbing hall over at the.
It's not very tall. You can't wrestle.
I know, I'm just saying it's.
Can't play King of the Hill on that.
There's a little bound over there. The green, the one with the turf on it.
A water fountain?
Water fountain, we are, we, we had a grant from Franklin County Board of Health. It ended up being for a wall mounted unit that we did not have a place for. So they tried to turn it into a, a ground mount unit outdoor, and the funding was canceled. So they took that back. So unfortunately, the, the funding, federal funding source they got that from was canceled. But we are working, we're, we're trying to finalize. We have this year budgeted work on the McGill House to redo the siding on it. It's all wood and rotten and in need of some serious maintenance, like the fence we talked about earlier today, tonight here. And we're putting, putting hardy plank on that, kind of keeping with the historic nature of the building, the house itself. Waiting on those final numbers to figure out where we're at with the budget. And to be able to put in that fountain. We're going to put it just, just to the west of the pickleball, between pickleball and. Playground.
Awesome.
Right on the trail.
When will it be installed?
I'm not sure.
Still waiting.
Still, yeah.
All right.
We've selected the thing. It'll be a dog bowl, a water bottle fill station, and a fountain.
Nice.
Okay. And did I hear you say 3.5 million?
That was the, an estimate, yes.
All right. Are you looking at borrowing or cashing on this?
Cash, as of right now.
Okay. When will you be deciding that for sure?
Well, as Mr. Peoples said, we just got the 90% plans today. So we really haven't had the opportunity to connect and talk about where we're at with funding and schedule and all of that. So I would say relatively soon, but we just haven't made that decision yet.
Because you're going to start getting contracted if you want to get that money spent by. Okay.
Correct.
All right. And the stream that you're redoing, is that the same one that we've been getting emails about from the neighbors?
Correct, yeah. And we've shared that with the property owners, that there's, that project is going to happen.
And that's going to be, should help their problem, should help. We're going to flow better. How's that?
The, the stream will, will, will flow better. There will not be a high spot in there that, that holds a little bit of water. But based on our information from our engineers, that the, the stream is not, our side is not causing any problems.
It's not where the constriction is.
Where the.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question real quick, for you, Mr. Peoples. What's the plan used for, for that, the storehouse at the park?
Nothing at this point. It'll be a park office, a, whether it be the JRD, whether it be a Parks Department itself, and having some office there with, we're talking about needing some additional storage where we've done away with the storage barn at, as part of the wastewater treatment plant. We need additional storage. So, looking at that being the office for a storage area as well, we can do that. We have.
So a couple ideas.
Yeah. Yeah. It needs rehabbed on the inside as well. You know, we've used it as a, it's a being user JRD storage right now for some of the soccer items. We have our construct, our, when this goes into construction, that'll be the construction office as well. So we've been able to use that for a couple of different things. It just, it's in bad shape. If, we looked at it originally when we purchased the property, we assessed the foundation. If the foundation was not in good shape, we were not going to keep that building. But it was actually very, very strong. So we put a new roof on it. And now just, you know, with the, with the 3C's of Shelter House sitting there, it's aesthetically, it's horrible. So.
It's old sandstone.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, solid.
May I ask a favor of you? Well, once this is redone, the Gill Park.
Mr. Peoples?
I know Ms. Amick was asking about the size of the baseball field. Who's the proposed user for this field? Would it be joint rec programming? High school at one point was discussed about, but I know they're going through a major renovation of their fields. So, I know Ms. Amick mentioned tournaments. One field isn't really enough to draw a large. One field isn't really enough to draw a large tournament setting. It might be a nice, like, I know Brock Strong hosts a tournament, but that's one field. So I guess I would love to understand the amount we're investing in one baseball field and who's using it?
So anybody who, who wants to use it, I mean, we have, there's travel baseball teams all over central Ohio that need space. So we're going to be able to rent that out when it's not being used for, you know, we don't know what the, what the JRD and the future of that. Adding two more baseball, 200-foot baseball fields that we have four of was not something that was very high on the radar. But having a larger field as part of that, it's just something we don't have. So instead of duplicating the efforts of, or the field space out at McGill, or.
Hanners.
Hanners, thank you. That we decided to put something in that we, and that we could utilize that we don't have and as well, you know, build it for the future.
It's multipurpose in nature, so the.
It overlaps.
The only, the only fencing is around the backstop and, you know, the first and third baseline. The whole outfield is no fencing.
Yeah.
So it's more like a practice.
The idea initially to put the grant together was to make this as multipurpose as possible. It's fairly low cost. It's about $60,000 to add in the infield, the dugouts, the fencing, all that. So it was a fairly low cost item when you're considering a $3.6 million project to add some flexibility to the space.
And if an organization wanted to rent it out and have an actual regulation game on it, they could probably put in a temporary fence too?
Yeah, there's been, we're going to, with the bases, we're going to put lugs, I don't know if that's the right word for it, but for the, all the different sized bases, there's a 60, 65, 70, 80, 90, I think is what, what they are. So we're going to have that to where it'll be, be able to transition to that. We'll have portable mounds as well that can be used for that.
Cool.
Okay. Anything else relative to McGill Park Phase 2B? Okay, thank you, Mr. Peoples. Any other, is there any, are there any new business items?
I just wanted to ask a favor of Mr. Peoples. Mr. Peoples, Mr. Groll, who you and I have discussed, is actually here and he's getting ready to have a public comment with us. But could you, before we leave, he missed what you said about the line on his street. Can you talk about that again real quick, just so he can hear it?
Sure. The, the line on Mound Street connects to the East Waterloo Street line. The current East Waterloo Street line is a 36-inch along Tryon Street. There's an 18-inch section of pipe that's about 100 foot. And then it's a 21-inch thick meanders back through Emmett's, underneath some houses on East Waterloo Street and through Emmett's Meadow goes north, straight north from there underneath the tracks, crosses back over to Tryon Street, goes up through Hawkins, Jennings and Kramer, goes through Winchester Trace. I'm not quite sure how, what route specifically goes, but then it goes to 33. So the East Waterloo Street line will replace the 18 and 21-inch line with a 30-inch line from Tryon Street up Waterloo, between the house, between Movo and Chloe Spa here at the Blue House to the south side of Emmett's Meadow.
So should it help with the capacity going through there?
It'll eliminate that restriction.
Okay.
As well.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? I just have one, one item. Tomorrow evening, August 5th, there will be, well, across the entire country. Those of you who are familiar with National Night Out, it is a nationwide effort in different communities to strengthen the relationships between community members and law enforcement. And we're going to have quite a showing in Canal Winchester tomorrow evening. It's at the high school, begins at 6:00 PM, 6 to 8:00 PM. There'll be some food trucks, there'll be multiple agencies there that you can chat with and bring your children and come out and support our local law enforcement. Again, high school, 6 to 8:00 PM. Anything else?
Just real quick, I did send the rules, the notes from the rules out for everybody. So just please get a chance to review them. We shouldn't have any changes at this point in time. And then I did ask Jordan to put them on the next agenda for approval.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
And then one last item. I got an email today. Our next music in the park is August 15th. As part of council outreach, we have been serving popcorn at some of these events when possible. So I just kind of wanted to check in and see if, if not now, maybe by the end of the meeting, if members of council are interested in participating in the August 15th Music in the Park. Just let me or Ms. Jackson know. And obviously limited to three. So the first three, don't everybody run up at the same time, but.
I haven't taken one, so I'll take this one.
Okay. All right. That was my.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
So, yes, is there a motion to adjourn? Made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shea. Roll call, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break. So council will begin at 7:10, a little more than five minutes, six minutes.
I can't help but laugh now. Good evening, everyone. This is a call to order for the August 4th, 2025 City Council Meeting. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Shea.
Pledge of Allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick, you're on the draw. All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Amick, present. Mrs. Amis?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Buskirk?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have minutes 25 dash 028. This is the July 7th work session meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Amis. Sorry. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is minutes 25 dash 029. This is the July 7th, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes. Do we have a motion to approve these minutes? So moved.
Second.
Trace.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Thank you. From Communications and Petitions, we have Madison Township Police Statistics for June 2025 included in your packet this evening. This will bring us to public comment for this evening. We just simply ask that when you step to the podium, please say your name. And then you'll see the timer behind me appear. We usually ask that you try and keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you have any questions, staff will try to answer them when we go through council reports. Well, thank you very much. We have. Great, okay. If anyone would like to step up, Mr. Groll, I see you've signed the list. So if you have a public comment you would like to make, you might as well do so now.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Groll. I reside at 31 East Mound Street and I am here to discuss several problems and concerns related to the recent and past storms that has led to water and property damage within my neighborhood. First is the inadequate storm sewer system that serves East Mound Street. Discussing this, I refer to the city's storm sewer map that shows a line that serves East Mound Street, beginning by Route 33 and running south to Big Walnut Creek. Crosses Mound Street between my house and my neighbor's house. Since 2013, we moved here, we have experienced four extreme storms. Three of those in the last 15 months and others that have led to the street flooding up and into our yards. When these storms occur, the result is that the line seems to fill from the north, coming past our property, the sewer line cannot take any further water and it's hours before the water starts to recede from our streets and yards. My understanding is correct, is this is a 16-inch line? If so, it is extremely undersized to handle this amount of rainwater. It needs either replaced or additional storm sewer lines. Second is the excessive water runoff into yards along the alley at the rear of my home and my neighbors at 25 East Mound. Two projects led to this problem. One being in 2018, 2019, the dirt and gravel parking area at the rear of 17 through 25 North High Street and east, poor east Waterloo was blacktopped. Part of this, the water was absorbed into the ground with little to no water flowing down the alley other than from the alley itself. Now a significant amount of water runs off this entire area, down the alley and into our yards and garages. The second was in 2019 when the field located behind our home was drastically raised by adding additional one to four feet of clay soil. My understanding was there were promises made to maintain the land, one being the building of trenches that would guarantee water being diverted to a retention pond. However, these trenches never worked and are now completely filled. Adding to this is the water from the alley that flows, does flow down, that could go into the field, doesn't because the level of the field is higher than the alley itself, causing it to also divert over into our area. Both projects appeared to have been sanctioned by the city back during this time, resulting in an extreme amount of water runoff turning our backyards into lakes. The recent storm, we had anywhere from three, four, five inches of rain sitting in our yards. Water runoff for days. The differences are measurable from before this to see what we have now. Looking around the neighborhood, I've got neighbors, including myself, that have water anywhere from wet basements to three to four feet of water in their basements. Several concerns to bring to your attention, as well as the cross slope of the alley that directs the water runoff into our yards, meaning the alley basically slopes and causes the water that comes down the alley to flow in our yard instead of straight down the alley or possibly into the field, which wouldn't anyway. We also have hydro, hydrostatic pressure being as a result of the higher water table under our properties. A higher water table is the result of the excessive amounts of water received in this area, resulting in my neighbor and my basements having wet floors. And as I said before, up to three to four feet of water in them after some of these storms. My neighbors have seen pressure coming from the walls, like a stream of water shooting out, coming up from our basements and everything else. So I think all of these issues itself with the water that's standing on our properties tends to lead to the, the building of the water table higher, causing these problems as well. And I think a lot of the basements that have been flooded, and at least in our area, is a result of this. This is just a, just a small amount of the issues that we seem to have related to all of this. Hopefully, this has been brought to the attention of the city before. I'll, I'll leave it at that. Hopefully, we can work with council and members of the city to address these problems and come up with a solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to reports of city staffs and officials. First, we have the Mayor's Court Report for July 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the Mayor's Court Report for July 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shea to approve the July 2025 Mayor's Court Report. Any discussion?
I'd like to compliment the sheriff on the increased enforcement that's keeping the year-over-year totals going in the right direction.
Anything else? Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to City Administrator Report. Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Just one thing to highlight from my, I guess a couple of things from my written report. Sorry, let me get there. ODOT did announce their closure date for, at least their scheduled closure date for the north side of Red Road, north of 33, that's supposed, construction that's supposed to start on the 11th of September and be done this year. That will eliminate that access. I expect more traffic to be at both Bixby Road and then also at Gender Road because of that. We have noticed an uptick in Gender Road traffic, 33, traffic, excuse me, going eastbound to northbound Gender Road with, there's a bridge out at Winchester Pike, so we've noticed quite a bit of uptick in traffic there, assuming the same with that. One thing from today was the first day of the Safety City event, Ms. Woodruff was out with the tikes. It was great to see them responding with the, or interacting with first responders. They heard they were spraying a water hose out there. So one of them was on a gurney plane, getting a ride up into there and climbing all over the place. So she said that they were having a lot of fun with that. And then one last thing, just our 25-year employee, James Daddy, who's a class two water operator, he's retired, Thursday was his last day. So congratulations to him. We'll miss him.
Mr. Peoples, we have talked at length about Mr. Groll, like you said.
Yes.
The field. I was gonna say, don't leave. I was like, please.
I was like, well, he just walked out.
Thank you.
I was trying to talk really fast. I mean, we've talked at length about it. You and I have walked that field numerous times and looked at it. The mounding that's back there that's causing some of this and the sloping that he's referring to, he indicated he's concerned that part of that's the city. Can you talk about that at all?
The city didn't do the work in the...
Did not mound it?
Did not mound it. You know, we paved the alley back there. I can't speak to the cross slope. I don't know what that is. The mounding out there, it was a field before. I don't know how it ended up. I don't know if we have, we had plans for that. They did put a drainage basin, or I guess a retention basin in there as well at one time. I've been back there for a while, so I don't know what that little spot ended up being as part of that. I do want, one thing to note, that is a 21-inch line that goes up through that way. I think he said 16. Still, it's not, it's not taking water down, but just, just one thing to note for that.
Now, the mounding is higher between, right behind his house and the house right behind it. And I apologize, I don't know the numbers, but the mounding is higher on that end. Could that be causing, like, can we go out and look at it and see, could that be causing some of the fact that it's forcing the water up? Because there are not drainage dishes.
Right. Yeah, there's no open drains in that area to take surface water. So whatever water is collected, it's gonna collect at the lowest point. It'll find its way into the storm sewer system. It's an old clay line. It's got cracks and holes and everything else in the joints. So that's where the water ends up receding. So it takes a little while to get into. Since there's no open drain, like, a lot of lower areas will have a manhole with a grated top on it, so water will be able to go down in there. There is none back in that area at all. So whatever surface drainage or whatever, whatever falls on the surface is gonna find the lowest spot based on the grade.
And I will tell you, whatever retention area you think it might be back in that field does not exist any longer because after the flooding, you know, living on trial, we can see the field.
Okay.
And it's not.
Yeah, there was a low spot that, and I don't have the...
It's a tiny low spot, but it's not holding hardly at all.
I don't have the plans for that. But again, whatever collects there will end up draining into that, into the storm sewer just through, through the cracks. Again, there's no, there's a manhole that sits back there, but on each side of Emma's Meadow, at Long Alley and then at, I don't know if it's Cherry Alley, but I believe it's right behind your house, there's a manhole that sits there as well, but it's not a, it's not an open grate or drain. It's also not at a low point.
Maybe you and I can go walk the mound in here soon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you know if the, if the owner of the Emma's Meadow property has been asked if they would be willing to smooth out the mounding?
I guess I'm not, I don't recall why that was done in the first place. I don't know if we have any, any submission on that as well. We are working with them for that, an easement for the storm sewer project. We're gonna locate a portion of that on there.
So we did issue a grading permit. I want to say it was probably 2017. The owner inquired about, they were taking basement dirt from the basements that were being dug at Canal Cove and bringing it to the site, and they wanted to grade it out for building pads. They were looking at building at the time, they were looking at building 13 apartment units, which is what that site is zoned for, but they could never make those numbers work. So they wanted to get the soil in there and grade out the building pads because they had that soil that was available to them at the time. But then the project never moved forward with building the apartment units there. But we did issue a grading permit. There is a detention basin. It's towards the old bowling balls annex building. There is a low spot that's still there. It's a sediment basin. There may be sediment that's kind of settled off in that now, but...
Yeah, it's not very deep.
It is, it is not deep, but the storm water is, from that site is directed to that point.
So the grading permit that would be issued, would that require them to actually spread? Or, because they wouldn't have dumped it and nothing ever came of it. So it's just been dumped on the property?
Well, it was graded, and then there has been additional mounding that was added that I don't believe was part of the grading permit, but I, I don't recall. I'd have to look back through our records.
Well, we'll take Mr. Herron, our field trip to the field, then.
But we did, we did do a grading permit there, and it was reviewed back in probably 2017.
Okay.
But if they added dirt afterwards, is that a different story?
It depends on how much and if it changed the drainage. Yes, but we might have issued a permit. I just might have not been involved in that portion of the project. I just...
Do it from...
Can I just add something to all this? Just a second. That field...
Get your, get your mic.
Being that I lived right behind there, I woke up one morning, I heard this pounding going on with construction equipment, heavy-duty construction equipment all over the field, dump trucks coming in, dumping for four or five days, nothing but topsoil. Wasn't soil, it wasn't dirt, it was clay soil. I should say it was clay soil. That was packed down by heavy-duty equipment for weeks. What that caused is for the water not to be able to be absorbed into the ground. The trenches that were made during that period of time were minimal along the roadway, and they had a trench going through the middle to where the high mound is, and then it's curved to the hole in the ground. Those are all filled in. The water never flowed there. So that was useless. The field gets cut grass-wise maybe two or three times a summer. Mosquitoes, bugs, you name it. It's unsightly. The mound there of dirt, I think, is what maybe they had left over, which I believe that is good topsoil. The hole may have been dug out, and it might be part of the dirt as well, so...
Mr. Groll, I think, you know, next steps really will be for maybe Mr. Peoples to come out and, you know, I think the city's committed to taking a look and helping to find... I can't say resolution is gonna be the word, but we're gonna look into the problem. Okay. And try and find support. And then I think the other thing too is that, you know, to your comment of, you know, the property not being maintained, I think, you know, if you want to report that, you know, that property isn't being maintained, I think there's a portal on the website to report an issue. And so if you ever, you know, if you're feeling like, hey, that grass is tall, it needs to be mowed, it's unsightly, you can certainly go to the city's website. There's a report of problem on there, and you can report that.
Is that something, though, the city should be watching for?
Well, I will tell you, I will tell you that for vacant properties, which this is a vacant property, there's no structures on it that they're required to be mowed twice a year.
What about that barn that's on it?
But part of that...
That's taller than me right now.
There's a barn on it.
It's required to be mowed twice a year.
I understand. But part of that parcel, isn't it not the, where Chloe's spa is located?
No.
No. Doesn't count. Okay.
The only thing on there is an old barn.
Okay. So it's not, all right. We'll follow up.
Thank you so much.
We'll work on, yeah. Thank you for bringing that.
Mr. Shump, could we change the code to do more mowings on that if we wanted to?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. All right. We will move to, any other questions for Mr. Peoples aside from this topic?
Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
You're welcome.
I thought, Mr. Moore, you had a question? I can answer?
No.
Okay, all right. We'll move to Fairfield County Sheriff's Report. Sergeant Strong.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Good evening, council. I feel like I missed the last handful of council meetings. I apologize for some failing reasons and approved vacation, so good to see you again. Just a few things real quick. I'm sure I'm gonna have some questions. I took some phone calls from some council members today, so just want to share a few things with you. I'll have my stats for July to you the next council meeting. I know, Mr. Peoples, I mentioned the Rip Fest, just a few minor issues, nothing major at all. So the storm, I want to give some credit. We're credited to do with my deputies. They did a fantastic job, not just the ones working the Rip Fest, but the three working the streets that night. Those guys got here at 6:00 PM and were wet from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So I'm not talking just like a little rainfall. These guys were in water up to their waist, and they were miserable, but they powered through and didn't complain. They did their job, so those guys did a fantastic job. So, and then, Ms. Amick, you mentioned too, the National Night Out tomorrow night, so we will be there. Looking forward to the event. I'll have, me and some of the other deputies will be there participating in that also. So... And on a lighter note too, you may see a different body style of a cruiser run around. We obtained our new Dodge Durango we switched to, so you see something, I don't know if it's fancier or nicer, but it's a different body style. But if you see a Dodge Durango run around, it's us, so. But that's all I have, and I have to take any questions.
I've been getting lots of complaints about break-ins, and Stoff and I know a lot of people up here, heard them too. What, what can y'all, can y'all help with that, or is there some advice you could give to our residents?
So I know I've said it time and time again, it's a crime of opportunity. It is. We've had a lot of the hotels, excuse me, Fairfield Inn and Hampton Inn have been hit a handful of times. They're mainly targeting, like, your construction vans. They're taking those. We had a couple of stolen cars. One was taken from Fairfield Inn. They left the stolen car and stole another one, so the one they left was stolen out of Columbus. The one that was recovered, that was stolen, it was recovered in Columbus. So it's just kind of frustrating. I know the one at the Hampton, they got a lot of tools, several thousand dollars out of one, and the clerk watched it on the monitors, called her boss first to see what she should do. The deputy ride was literally just, I mean, across the street, and, you know, he's pretty frustrated. He should be. We want to catch him too. But again, we're trying. I did go to my bosses today, and we are going to be, not just saturation patrols, I want to say, with uniform Mark Cruisers, but I'm gonna come in later on this week, couple nights this week, and I'm gonna be snooping around in and on my car. Just hopefully we can catch him. We're trying, I promise, so. I know Chief Collins today, I'm meeting with him, and he goes to the monthly Franklin County Chiefs meetings, so all the suburb city police chiefs are there. They're all experiencing the same problems. It's not just Canal Winchester. So we are trying to curb it. We're doing our best. I assure you that.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate you. We know that you're not the one out there breaking into cars, so, I mean, thank you for all you do. I'm not trying to be jello-like.
No, I understand. It's just as frustrating. I try to provide the best police service to the city. It's my job, and trust me, I want to catch every one of them too, so. But we're trying, I promise.
The incidents that I've become aware of seem to be like a one-person kind of thing. Now, there could be a driver that isn't being picked up on home cameras or whatever. Is there any indication that these are rings, or is it truly just isolated individuals out creating mischief?
Without kind of getting into the whole investigation of this one, I think this one's isolated.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of, the flock cameras, we're utilizing them, we're trying, so. Yeah. It's just been in the last week, we've really been hit pretty hard.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of the things that we always talk about is, you know, and I think, you know, what helps Sergeant Strong's staff as well is, you know, let's not make ourselves crimes of opportunity. Lock your car. Don't leave valuables accessible. Don't leave your garage door open overnight, or anytime, really. Your garage, if you're not there, you, you know, close your garage door because while you might be somewhere else, someone might be casing your garage while your garage door is open. Lock your man doors when you go in at night because from what I hear, it's not hard to pop open a garage door, so you want to make sure your man door is locked because it's that easy. Or if you park on the street, make sure you pull your garage door opener in with you at night because, you know, parking your car on the outside and leaving a garage door opener outside is also an opportunity to invite crime, so. I think there are a lot of things that we look to you for, but I think we also need to make sure we're looking at ourselves in the mirror and making sure that we're, you know, doing our part, so. It's tough, right? We, I mean, we grew up in a time where you could leave your car unlocked and nobody would come through, and that's unfortunately not just, it's just not where we are today.
It's...
Not where I grew up.
I understand.
I tell everybody, listen, the city is, it's a very safe city. Any town's got this problem.
Yep.
You know, I had a conversation with another deputy, you know, about a church, you know, we used to leave churches unlocked, but now we lock them, and we put armed deacons in churches now. It's just, it's a safety thing. It's not that it's a bad town or anything like that. But, and a few of the stolen cars we had last week, the keys were in them with the car unlocked, so, again.
Is the garage considered part of your home if it's attached?
If it's attached, it is.
Do you think part of the reason we're seeing such an uptick in these types of crimes is the penalty, if they aren't hot, if not severe enough?
Are you asking my personal opinion?
No.
Yes.
You're treading into...
Like, is this something maybe we should pursue?
It's frustrating to see the, what do you wanna call it, the penalty?
Snap on the hands?
Yep.
We'll have to call up what it is.
And to see the same names constantly. We do see that a lot, too. We do our job, and then it's just, from there, it is, it's tough. It's, now it's in the, it's in the hands of the courts.
You just gotta catch them in Fairfield County.
All right. Well, this seems like a nice segue to Law Director Report.
Sergeant, I just want to tell you, thank you for sending your team out to JRD event. We had a phenomenal time. I had to laugh, though. One of your officers was not familiar with stickball.
Yeah, was it, I think I know who you're talking about.
Yeah, he was like, what's stickball? And I'm like, well, come join. And so they were out there playing in the field and playing stickball. It was, it was great.
That's good, that's good first to interact with the kids like that.
Oh, it was good. It was really good.
Yeah, they all had a lot of fun.
They, they were cheering them on when they ran.
Mr. Shump?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. No formal report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Shump?
I don't know. Do you have one more?
I don't. Finance Director Report, Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Just one thing I want to highlight from my written report. Our 2023-2024 audit is complete. It has been filed with the state auditor's office. They will do their review of it and then officially release that audit once they are done with that. I am happy to say no issues were reported. We had one verbal comment from the auditors that I will discuss with all of you. It's in regards to your training as council members, so we can talk about that once everything has been finalized. But it was a very easy process. We've worked with these auditors for many years now. They know us, we know them, so no complaints there. Just happy to say that everything went, went very, very well. no complaints there, just happy to say that everything went very, very well.
Well done, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Jackson? Okay, then finally, Development Director, Mr. Herr.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. A few items to highlight, we did have a CWICC meeting, we had the Old Town Building Improvement Grant Program application on. They elected to fund three applications for 60 East Waterloo, 36 North High Street, and two and four South High Street. So some of those are interior improvements, which we haven't done as part of this program before. We'll be installing an ADA restroom and upgrading some electric that'll make some of these buildings more safe in our downtown, which is always a benefit when you've got so many historic buildings in close proximity to one another, so, good projects there. We did get a final development plan for both Kroger to go in on their new location on Diley Road, and from Stark Enterprises for a final development plan application for their multifamily project on Hill Road. And so those will both be on Planning and Zoning's agenda at their meeting next Monday evening, August 11th. You have to answer any questions you want.
Any questions for Mr. Herr?
Mr. Herr, are you able to send us those final reports, just so we can look at them ahead of time?
Yeah, you should have received that email today when the agendas went out.
Yeah, it's already.
I did not look at it yet, though.
The Planning and Zoning Agenda has the final Kroger site development plan.
Yes, Kroger and Stark are both.
Stark. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Herr.
Thank you.
We'll move to resolutions. First resolution this evening is Resolution 25-039. Ms. Jackson, can you read that resolution?
A resolution to accept the application for the annexation to the City of Canal Winchester of certain territory in Violet Township containing 4.38 plus or minus acres and being located at the northwest corner of Lythopolis Winchester Road and Ashbrook Road.
Thank you. The sponsor for this is Mr. Busker.
I move to adopt Resolution 25-039.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, seconded by Ms. Amick. Any discussion?
Again, I cannot understand why we are accepting this parcel when we are getting no benefit as a city and giving benefit in exchange.
That's not true, Mr. Shea. The benefit of this, the way I see it, is I would like to see us be able to extend, expand our borders. This is key to, if we annex this, then we can also annex beyond that, so this is a key to have this within our city limits, so we can continue to expand out in that direction. I understand it's a very small portion, and it does benefit the property owner, but it also benefits us for future expansion as well and annexation. And to piggyback on what Mr. Busker said, you know, we talk about the communities that are expanding around us, and we like to be able to control what's going into the areas around us, and I think we've talked about what Lythopolis has put in, and they're the ones that are close to that border, and they have the ability to expand, if I'm not mistaken, as they continue to push down the road, so that's another food for thought. As we push, you know, we're trying to build Canal and continue to improve Canal Winchester, and so our only way to do that is to continue to obtain land.
Oh, I'm not opposed to obtaining land, I'm not.
It's going to be contiguous.
Like, there at Ashbrook, that's all, other than this property, everything along Ashbrook on the north side of the road is already in the city limits, correct?
Correct.
And then across the city is already Lythopolis city limits?
Across from this parcel, there is one parcel that's in Lythopolis.
Okay.
So it's adjacent to this parcel.
And if we were to not annex this, does that give Lythopolis room to come more this way?
They could annex this 4.38 acres, yes.
Is there anything else after that?
The rest of it's already in the city, west of this.
Okay, thank you.
But north and south of Lythopolis is, you know, that's still in the township.
Are we going that way?
There's no plans currently, and annexation is typically property owner driven.
All right.
So it's up to the property owners.
Then you make fair points. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
No.
Next, I'm on the agenda is Resolution 25-040. Ms. Jackson, could you read that resolution as well?
A resolution to authorize the mayor slash city administrator to accept an easement from Isaac W. Kaiser.
Sponsor for this is Ms. Amick.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 25-040.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Amick, seconded by Ms. Amos. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Amick? Yes. Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to ordinances, first, the third readings, we have Ordinance 25-016. Ms. Jackson, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to accept the dedication of real property from the Board of Trustees of the Columbus Metropolitan Library for use as public right-of-way.
Thank you, the sponsor is Ms. Amick.
Thank you very much. The, I move to adopt Ordinance 25-016.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amick, seconded by Ms. Amos. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Amick? Yes. Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is Ordinance 25-017. Ms. Jackson, could you read this one as well?
An ordinance providing for amendments to the Charter of the City of Canal Winchester to be placed upon the ballot at the November 4th, 2025 municipal election for approval by the city's electorate.
Thank you, the sponsor is Mr. Moore. Motion to adopt Ordinance 25-017?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, seconded by, I believe, by Mr. Busker. Any discussion?
I believe that Mr. Peoples was going to just talk briefly about the communication to the public.
We just worked on a communication plan.
Okay.
We have nothing, no specifics, it's just, it is on our radar.
Okay, because Section 4 talks about newspaper or mailer, and I didn't know if either one of those is actually something we had planned to do or not, so I don't, what newspaper? Would it be in the dispatch, in the Columbus Dispatch?
The.
We could, I will tell you, the dispatch would be very expensive. Is the messenger back?
The messenger is back.
It's back, okay.
We would reach out.
Okay, great. All right, I'm sorry, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No additional discussion, roll call?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick? Yes. Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes. Thank you. Next is Ordinance 25-018. Ms. Jackson, could you read this ordinance as well?
An ordinance to authorize the transfer of fire apparatus to the Madison Township Professional Firefighters IAAF Local 2507 and waiving Section 161.08 of the codified ordinances relative to disposal and sale of surplus property.
Thank you, the sponsor is Ms. Amos.
Motion to adopt Ordinance 25-018?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amos, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? I know Mr. Peoples was looking into that tax grant for painting in that truck, so we'll just keep looking at that. Oh, what? I thought we, no? Okay, maybe. All right. Just kidding.
Brilliant.
Yeah. Any other discussion on this topic? If not, roll call.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick? Yes. Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you. On for second reading this evening is Ordinance 25-019. Ms. Jackson, could you read that ordinance as well?
An ordinance to amend the 2025 Appropriation Ordinance Number 24-033, Amendment Number Four.
Thank you, the sponsor is Ms. Amos.
Thank you, second reading only, please.
Thank you. We have no ordinances on for first reading this evening. We'll move to council reports. Our next city council work session and council meeting will be Monday, August 18th, 2025, with work session at 6:00 and full council beginning at 7:00. We'll move into September, we'll have a city council work session and full council Tuesday, September 2nd, it's a Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, with work session at 6:00 and council at 7:00. And then our last meeting in September will be work session on Monday, September 15th, 2025, at 6:00 PM and full council that same evening at 7:00.
Mr. Bennett, I know you said that that would be your last September meeting, but it is a fifth Monday month, which means that we have the potential for our committee of the whole on the 29th.
You know how I love a good meeting.
I think we hold it to what he said, he said, last meeting.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
All right, if we have any items that we would like to submit for a committee of the whole review.
Well, that might be when our, will they have the.
Oh, I got a couple.
The zoning, zoning stuff, will they have that ready to go?
That may be a good opportunity to do that.
Okay. So that might be.
See, I get my wish.
Nobody, if I will.
The three of them.
Mr. Shea had a couple, hold on.
No, I really didn't, he was just.
He was being facetious.
Our next city council Council Connect meeting date is Saturday, August 16th, from 9:00 to 10:00 PM. The rest of the dates for the year are also listed in our agenda, or, yeah. City W Human Services report, Mr. Shea.
Yes, the Canal Winchester Human Services currently has one open trustee position, and they're accepting nominations. Three-year term beginning 19th of August, 2025, and ending in August of 2028. If you know someone who would be a strong advocate for their mission and a valuable asset to their board, please email your nomination to Alitha Mullins, which is alitha.mullins@cwhumanservices.org. That's alitha.mullins@cwhumanservices.org, or visit their website, and the applications are due by Thursday, August 7th, at 4:00 PM. And Alitha thanks everyone for their support and partnership, and they're geared up for new schools. Thank you.
Thank you. CWICC, Ms. Amick?
Thank you. The CWICC met just a couple weeks ago, and I just have a couple of updates on projects that you were already aware of. A few of us had an opportunity to visit Ohio Health today. The facility is absolutely just beautiful, it's got a lot of flexibility in the interior, the way it's constructed, about how they could, you know, convert it to additional offices or move offices around. It's a pretty impressive facility. It will be a 24-hour emergency room, so hopefully you won't need that, but if you do, we've got now an emergency space right here in our own backyard. And they, today they reported 50 new jobs, but I think that what they had submitted previously is 70 new jobs, so we'll say somewhere between 50 and 70 new jobs initially for the Ohio Health business there. The Columbus Metropolitan Library, I've heard a variety of different things about their opening, but right now, Mr. Herr has reported that they will complete in the fall of 2025 with occupancy later this year, so we're all very excited about that. And hopefully, if you haven't already, the city council received an email for a tour in September, so when you have an opportunity, respond to that. The Historical Society, the Cheney Mill, they are planning to have the renovations complete and open Elevate 1828 in November. I'm sure it's going to be absolutely beautiful. Distributor Wiring Cable has completed construction, and they are now fully operational, which is exciting to have another new business operational here in Canal Winchester. Under the new business projects, I only have one that's actually noteworthy that you haven't heard from Mr. Herr already. So DHL is going to be bringing a new client into their space on Winchester Boulevard. This is very noteworthy, in my opinion. They will be serving Meta as a client, and they'll have a similar operation to what DB Schinkler does for Google in Canal. So we are a computer server prep mega site, we'll call it, for some of these companies that, so if you know people that are in that business, Canal Winchester would be a great place for them to come look for employment, so. Let me see, Mr. Herr already talked about the Old Town Improvement. I'm sorry, I have my items highlighted, give me one second, please. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Mr. Herr, I had a quick question, the Ohio Health, and maybe I was completely oblivious during the conversation, that does happen. When did they decide to do the emergency? I knew that there was a lot of specialized services, but I didn't know that it was going to be 24/7.
Since day one.
Yeah. From the.
Yeah, the entire first floor is an emergency.
That was the entire problem with.
I feel like I should have asked about that hole's, yeah, with the noise.
No.
Yeah.
They've already talked about that, the ambulances aren't coming in, it's.
Oh, no, no, we, yeah, we've solved it all, but yeah, this was part of that hole.
No, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, we can't, yeah.
She might.
I'm not even going to follow up on that one.
Let's, CWJRD report, Ms. Amos, Mr. Moore.
We had a party.
We did, had a.
We had a big party.
Had a great party.
Yeah, it was well-received, we had the most beautiful weather, we had our county sheriffs, Madison Fire Department were out there, we had a lot of inflatables, we had hundreds and hundreds of kids, it was wonderful, and we're very thankful to everybody in the community that came out to join us. Our next meeting, do we have anything else other than our next meeting?
No, football practice is in full swing, football started in full swing, so just waiting for the games to start and.
Dave George has joined us over there, he's one of our CWJRD board members, we're so thankful for him.
He's also a school board member.
He's also a school board member, yeah, but we're very thankful Dave joined us again in the JRD. Our next meeting is August 21st at the Old Town Hall, we are open, so please come and join us.
Thank you, Ms. Amos, and Mr. Moore. Destination Canal Winchester, Mr. Busker?
Thank you, and speaking of a party, we want to thank everyone who braved the heat and the rain to come out and support the Blues and Rip Fest. Special thanks to our sponsors, volunteers, and city workers who were able to make the event possible. Um, we do wanna say, and this was mentioned earlier, um, a special thank you to Mayor Steger, um, City Administrator, Mr. Peoples, and community member Pat Lynch and others for their assistance in the beer garden during the storm. Uh, their quick action helped avoid, um, some dangerous situations in the heavy rain. Um, so we do greatly appreciate that, and we do, um, all the, uh, first responders that were there as well, we do really appreciate everyone being there and keeping us safe. It's just greatly appreciated. Other events that we have coming up, um, Farmer's Market continues through the end of September, and, um, August, um, Summer Sunday at Stradly is August 24th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, um, and features Oxbows String Company. And I mentioned that each one of our council members are app, and I just wanted to let everyone know, uh, due to me announcing that, we have, um, exceeded our expectations for downloads of that app, um, but we would like to continue to see that grow, so everyone is aware what's going on in our community.
It's a really nice app.
Did Mr. Busker just take full credit for the amount of downloads?
I think so.
I did.
Okay. I was like...
But he tells what the name of the app was.
Destination Canal Winchester, you can download it in your app store for free.